I call this meeting of the Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. Let a record show that a quorum of members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code Chapter 551. It's six o'clock. If you would, please stand with me as Mr. Hubert leads us in the invocation and Mrs. Bush in the pledges of the meetings.
Thank you. Those of you who wish to pray, please join me. Our dear Heavenly Father, we are grateful for this day, this opportunity we have to come together and discuss the issues of this great school district. We ask thee to be with us, be with our students, be with those that are with us today, that we may have a good productive meeting this day. We ask this in the name of our Savior Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Texas pledge: Honor the Texas law. Hallelujah allegiance to the city of Texas, one state, under God, one, indivisible.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hubert. This is Bush. Item 2A, Special District Recognition. Read for a Better Life Initiative. Dr. Stockton.
Great. First of all, I want to thank you all for being here tonight to support reading. That's easy to support. Every year, we kick off our Read for a Better Life program by reading to a classroom during a board meeting. We take time out of the board business and do what's really important, and that's read to students. As adults, we know the power of reading, and we know that if every child had an adult reading to them 30 minutes a day, that this world would be a different place. Not only would students grow up with a love of reading, but those relationships would be developed through that interaction. So, reading is really critical. Tonight, we're going to take some time out and read here at the board meeting. We're also asking our parents to read throughout of our community. And tomorrow, we'll kick it off on the campuses. So, I would encourage all of you, if you have a chance, to read on campus, volunteer reading to children. If you have a book, and you show up to one of our schools, and you tell them you're there to read, they're going to check you out. We're going to check people out before we let them in our schools, but they're going to put you to reading. So, hopefully, you're involved in that. This year, when speaking with the entire CISD staff to start the school year out, I challenged them to make this the year of kindness, because our world could use a shot of kindness. Kindness goes a long way. Kindness is underrated. Even in disagreement, you can be kind. So, what better way to be kind than take your time out to read to students? So, with that, we have a very special class today. We're students from Austin Elementary School. So, if you are here from Austin Elementary School, if you will come up and join me, I'm going to take this little microphone, and you're going to introduce yourselves, okay? So, just if you walk up, and, come on, we'll go first. If you walk up and tell them who you are, and then, we're going to sit down, well, just stand right here, and then, we'll get everybody seated at one time.
My name's Cutter Jan from Austin Elementary School, and I'm in Ms. Makin's class.
Perfect. Round of applause, everybody, yeah.
My name is Brayden Eckles, and I'm from Austin Elementary, and I'm in Ms. Makin's class.
Great.
My name's Marcy Viegas, and I'm in Ms. Makin's class.
My name is Alice Cullen, and I'm from Austin Elementary in Ms. Makin's class.
Great.
Hello, my name is Elias Diaz, and I'm from Austin Elementary in Ms. Abel's class.
Great. Anybody else? Did you miss anybody? Any adult want to come up and sit down? There's a couple of you out there. They're tempted, I know. Okay. All right, so, I'm going to move my chair here. I'm going to actually move it right in here, so Dr. Heinz, I'm going to block you just a little bit. Guys, if you could come over in front of me, okay? A couple of you come out over here. Now, we're pretty fancy, so, the pictures, I'm going to actually not turn and show you my book. You can see the pictures on the big screen. Okay? Everybody got it?
Got it.
All right. Sit back, relax, be ready to be entertained. "My New Teacher in Me." That seems appropriate with school just starting, right? Yeah. "The first day of school, it was finally here. I wondered who'd be my new teacher this year. Then at 8:30 sharp, a tall stranger walked in. He stood by the chalkboard and stroked his long chin. He said, 'I'm Mr. Booth, and I'm happy to say I'll be teaching you all about fractions today. Now, open your textbooks to page number three.' And that's when he stopped, and he stared right at me. He said, 'You, young man, why is that filth on your shirt? You can't come in my classroom all covered with dirt.' I said, 'Nice to meet you, sir. Billy's the name.' See, a funny thing happened before the bus came. I was digging to China out in my backyard, and I almost was there when I hit something hard. While I dug, I dug, and I dug a bit more, and discovered the skull of a real dinosaur. And I would have cleaned up, sir, but hey, I'm no fool. I just couldn't be late on the first day of school. For a second or two, Mr. Booth kind of froze. Then he walked up to me, and he looked down his nose. I don't tolerate nonsense, no, not one degree, and your story sounds highly unlikely to me. Why, of course, it's unlikely, I said. Oh, by far. The awesomest things in the world often are. For instance, this friend of my third cousin Ned's got a farm where the dairy cows each have two heads. That's so highly unlikely that tourists all stop just to take their own pictures at three bucks a pop. Completely ridiculous, sneered Mr. Booth. Please stop wasting our time and just stick to the truth. Well, the truth can seem crazy, like that day in June when my grandfather famously walked on the moon. And he played the ukulele while flying a kite. It was all in the papers. You've heard about it, right? You know what? My grandfather even implied someday he might take me along for the ride. The class started cheering. Take us, take us, too. Then Mr. Booth bristled and snapped. That'll do. Pure poppycock. Class, please be quiet, be still. He is not going off to the moon, never will. That's all right, I told him. The moon is okay, but I've been to a much cooler place anyway. I just went on vacation with my dad and my mom to an island somewhere between Norway and Guam, where the blueberry muffins grow right on the trees, and you flip inside out every time that you sneeze. All the rabbits say moo, and the poodles go neigh, and the traffic light colors are pink, blue, and gray. And every third, oh, and every third Thursday about half past one, all the gravity stops. Wow, is that ever fun? There's a squid eating contest, and hey, if you win it, they let you be king for exactly one minute. Then everyone does what you tell them to do. Man, I hope, sure hope, we get to go back next year, too. Mr. Booth didn't care for that story one bit. He furrowed his brow and said, 'Okay, that's it. Admit that your stories are simply absurd. I just do not believe them, not one single word.' Then I cleared my throat and said, 'Well, sir, you know, just because you don't believe doesn't mean it's not so. Just because you can't imagine it, that doesn't mean that it simply can't be or won't ever be seen. I'll bet you every great thinker and leader we've got could see all kinds of things other people could not. So then, why get upset if somebody like me tries to look at the world just a bit differently? Enough, Mr. Booth. No more of these stunts. You'll march straight to the principal's office at once.' Something slipped from my book as I walked to the door. Mr. Booth picked it up, and his jaw hit the floor. It was me and a cow with not one head but two. Oh, I said, 'I was planning to give that to you. It's a little good luck gift. I got it for free.' He stared hard at the photo, then looked back at me. I avoided the principal's office that day. In fact, old Mr. Booth put my gift on display. He steals a quick glance at it once in a while. I'm not even kidding, I once saw him smile. We should get along fine, and certainly clear, there's a lot we'll be teaching each other this year, like how all my stories are perfectly true, well, except for, well, maybe, a detail or two. And that's the end of the story. Did you enjoy that book?
Yes, sir.
Why did you enjoy it? Oh, that's round of applause, round of applause, yay! So, why did you enjoy that book? Somebody tell me why you enjoyed it. Yes?
How he, all the stuff he says, like, he, like, digging down, down the tree.
Yeah. Neat stuff, isn't it? What else did you like? Yes?
I liked all the detailing of the story, because I like how, I like how the details really match with all the words and stuff, so I really like that.
Great. You've been paying attention in class, haven't you? You talk detail, that's good. Well, you know what I liked about the book? One part I liked? I liked that not only did the students learn from Mr. Booth, but Mr. Booth learned from the students, too. I thought that was pretty neat. Never thought about your teacher learning from you, did you?
Maybe sometimes.
Well, hello there, how you doing? See, it's good to see you today. Now, you have to introduce yourself. You have to say who you are in the microphones. There we go.
I'm Santiago.
Welcome. Have a seat. We were just talking about reading. Do you like when your teachers read your books? Okay, don't all answer at once. Do you like when teachers read your books?
Yay!
Okay, that's great. That's great. That was a trick question, actually, because your teachers and I were going to have some talking if you answered that. So, what else would you like to talk about? You like reading, don't you?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we encourage you to read just as much as you can, because we all believe, all the adults in the room believe, that the more you read, the better off you're going to be in life. And you all, do you have dreams about what you want to do someday?
I do.
Yeah? Like, what do you want to be someday?
Mechanic.
Okay? Mechanic, what else? Anybody want to be a doctor? How about an attorney? How about a, how about a teacher? Oh, call me, call me, call me. Well, you know how you get to become what you want to become someday is, you read a lot, you learn about it. So, I encourage you to read just as much as you can, and I want to thank your parents for bringing you today, because that means a lot when they take time out of their schedule to bring you to something special, especially about reading. So, make sure you give them a big thank you when you go home, okay? Anybody have any questions before we go? You got the floor, literally, you have the floor. Well, I look forward to coming and visiting you at Austin, and hope that you all have a great school year. How about a round of applause for us, guys? Okay, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome, guys. You know, I was not facing the crowd, obviously, but it got real quiet when I read. And when I take time to read at our assembly, and when I say our assembly, beginning of the year, we have an assembly with 5,000 people there, and I read a children's book every year. Sometimes I have people help me read it, and you can hear a pen drop as I'm reading. And I always tell the kids that when I look up and I watch, and I'm reading, and I look at them, their jaws open, they're like this. Well, the truth is, students, when I look at all the adults when I'm reading, they're the same way. Their mouths open, just, because everybody likes to be read to you. So, thank you for supporting reading. Again, the more we can read to our children, the better this world's going to be. So, thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Dr. Stockton. Item 2B, Special District Recognition. I'm rushed, I apologize.
We have a very special treat attached to Austin Elementary School today, so I'm going to ask Dr. Pearson to come in, if you'll come up and introduce our very special guest. Sorry, we have that at elementary size right now.
I'm just going to take it off. There we go. So, President Husbands, Dr. Stockton, Board of Trustees, we are super excited to be here tonight to recognize one of our teachers. Our Austin teachers do amazing things every day, and most of what they do never shows up on a score sheet anywhere. And tonight is one of those nights where something amazing happened that you'll never see on a score sheet. One of our teachers, on August 24th, Ms. Alcazar was on lunch duty with her students, and one of her students began choking on a grape, and there was plenty of panic. People on the radio starting to call for the nurse, and Ms. Alcazar just jumped into action. She came over and performed the Heimlich maneuver, the grape dislodge, saving the child's life. So, we want to honor her tonight, because we just think that's amazing on top of everything else. But during the day, she was able to just jump into action without a second thought and save that student's life. So, Ms. Alcazar.
Mrs. Alcazar, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, it never ceases to amaze me to know about all that Conroe ISD employees do. It was not long ago that we were here for another gentleman who had had a heart condition and was saved, his life was saved by another Conroe ISD employee. It was my privilege to be a part of that as well. Just have this little recognition, but it's a big, huge recognition. It's a Special District Recognition Award, Irene Alcazar, by the Conroe ISD Board of Trustees, in appreciation for your life-saving actions and commitment and dedication to the students and the community of the Conroe Independent School District. We thank you for all you do. We really do appreciate you. Many examples of why we have a great district. Mrs. Gottfried, do we have anybody signed up?
Yes, we do.
The next 30 minutes have been designated for public participation by patrons who have signed up to address the Board in accordance with Board Policy BED. Please remember that the Board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are not posted on our agenda. The Board has adopted the complaint policies that are designated to secure at the lowest administrative level a prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns. These policies provide that if a resolution cannot be reached administratively, the person may appeal the administrative decision to the Board as a properly posted agenda item. Copies of the district's complaint policies can be found on the district's website. Those who have registered to address the Board will be limited to five minutes for their presentation. Delegations of five or more must appoint and representatives to present their views to the Board. Mrs. Gottfried, please call the first person who has signed up to address the Board.
Katie Clark.
Thank you for coming. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Katie Clark. My children attend Mitchell Intermediate and Galatas Elementary. I'm also a former Conroe ISD educator. I taught four years at Branch Crossing Junior High, starting in 2001. I now volunteer at our schools so frequently that a classmate of my son once asked me if I worked there. I am so proud to be part of our excellent district. But I'm here tonight on behalf of dozens of concerned parents to bring to your attention something that has been missing for many of our elementary students, enough recess. For the third year in a row, students at Galatas have just 15 minutes of daily recess. The same is true now at Buckaloo for 3rd and 4th graders. Three years ago, students at Galatas had a full 30 minutes for recess, the same amount of time which is still provided at other successful schools in our district like Holson Tough. I urge you to take action to ensure that all students across CISD in kindergarten through 4th grade have 30 minutes of daily recess. I have heard repeatedly over the last few years from my child and the parents of other children that recess is too short, so I decided to see what the experts had to say. The results are conclusive. I've provided you with copies of some of the research I've done. The National Association for Sport and Physical Education calls for a minimum of 20 minutes of daily recess. The American Academy of Pediatrics, in a 2013 policy statement called "The Crucial Role of Recess in School," cites 47 studies in making a strong case that recess is a wise investment of time in the school day. The report details the many cognitive, academic, social, emotional, and physical benefits of recess, benefits which it says are not fully realized when the decision is made to diminish recess. I realize that principals do face many challenges when scheduling their school days, and they currently set their own to meet their school's needs. However, when a vital part of the school day like recess is being cut in half, your attention as a Board is warranted, and your involvement is needed. One reason recess should concern the Board is that this decrease is counterproductive academically. Studies cited by the AAP found that the break of recess actually increases students' productivity and attention in the classroom. This break is unique from other parts of the school day like PE, which are also important, but the benefits of recess lie in its unstructured playtime, a time for students to unwind from and recharge for the rigors of their school day. In this regard, it's a mental health issue for our youngest students. Another reason for you to act is that other administrators have not. I presented this information to our principal last May. Concerns voiced by multiple parents at our campus over the last year have not yielded any change. I also shared this research with Dr. Phillips in her role as the administrator for elementary education. She said she agreed that unstructured playtime is important and plans to review the research this spring as principals are planning next year's school days. I do see the need to carefully review policy, but surely, our children should not have to wait another year for something they need now. There is also a precedent for you as a Board to set recess policy. Your colleagues at both Houston ISD and Austin ISD just this year have mandated 30 minutes of daily recess for all elementary students in their district, at the urging of parents and teachers. Recess matters. Don't let this issue get buried in a committee somewhere all year while our children, some as young as five years old, have just 15 of the 420 minutes they're at school every day playing outside. That's just 3.5% of their school day spent in something that pediatric health experts have called crucial. It's time for you, for Conroe ISD as a district committed to excellence, to commit to take action to ensure that all elementary students in grades K-34 have the 30 minutes of daily recess they need.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Stockton, President Husbands, and School Board members. I'm Cheryl Howell, President of Conroe TSTA. TSTA has a longstanding relationship with the district and with the School Board. We're very proud of that. In the future, I would like to reintroduce the due process for educational support personnel, or ESPs, that I presented in February of 2016. At this time, I'd like to introduce my new executive board. I have John Neighbors, who is the Vice President from Hawk, Carrie Freemire, who is my Treasurer from Bosman, Pat Corillo, who is at RIDE, and she is our ESP representative, and Kristy Swaboda, who is my Secretary, and she is also at Bosman. Danielle Kreider is our Membership Chair. She is at Grangerland, but her husband, her husband, her son had a football game this afternoon, so she could not attend this evening. I just want to say, we look forward to meeting with you and working with you for the rest of this year, and we just thank you for all your support.
Thank you very much for being here. Thank you.
Mrs. Howell has also signed up to speak on another topic.
This is not a TSTA thing.
Okay. Well, welcome again.
Thank you. Yeah. Not that TSTA doesn't endorse, but this is me personally.
Okay.
I was so happy to learn that Barbara Cargill's name was presented as a name for one of the future elementary schools. I've known Barbara for over 25 years, more years than I want to really say. Our children grew up together, attended the same schools in CISD. I personally worked with and for Barbara during the summer. She is one of the directors and the creator of Wonders of the Woodlands Science Camp, which is a wonderful camp that many CISD teachers participate in in the summer as teachers, and our children go there. Barbara has also been on the State Board of Education for the last 12 years. I have helped her in all of her campaigns. She always puts students first, and I just think it would be such an honor and a privilege to have her name on a school for Conroe Independent School District.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We call Andrea Custer.
Good evening.
I'm Andrea Custer. I have three children in CISD, and I actually am reading for a better life tomorrow morning in two classrooms.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. I'm here tonight, though, to also speak about the school naming. So, I'd like to say that I'm sure the people after which CISD has named its schools have made significant contributions to our district and/or community, and I'm absolutely not here to dispute or take away from their service whatsoever. I understand, and I also understand, that not all our schools are named this way, but I've always found the practice of naming our schools after still-living past trustees, administrators, or political figures odd. So, when the most recent CISD bond passed and the addition of brand-new schools was imminent, I thought, surely, there is a deserving person that served the community well and has also lived out their life completely. I started researching just to see if I could find any one of note. Pretty quickly, I came across Lucille Bradley. Ms. Bradley was a 90-year resident of Conroe. She was a 2nd-grade teacher for more than 30 years in CISD and taught through segregation. She played music for her church and sang in the choir. She was so adored by her students and their parents that many kept in touch throughout the years. Some took her to doctor's appointments and lunch, while another brought her breakfast every morning. She was so beloved that her 100th birthday, there was to be a three-day celebration in Conroe, including a parade. It's a testament to the goodness of humanity to have a woman who lived through segregation teach the importance of treating one another well and to be kind. She was adamant that her students learn their patriotic songs. A friend and former student visited with Ms. Bradley toward the end of her life and reports her saying that she was so proud of how far Conroe had come in bridging unity with all people, no matter their skin color. Our own Dawn Stockton said, "Ms. Bradley's kind heart and compassion greatly impacted many lives in our community. At a time when our country is so divided, when state-sponsored segregation is actually being considered, can you think of a better model of unity and peace and kindness?" This was a teacher right here in CISD. What started simply as an exercise in researching anyone who wasn't still alive and active in the school district or Montgomery County politics, I actually came across somebody quite extraordinary. I was surprised to learn a school had not already been named after her, but now that she lived her life completely, and so beautifully, maybe it's time we honor her. I submitted her name via the CISD website form for school name submissions on July 22nd, but she wasn't on the list of suggestions published in the paper. After two attempts via the CISD contact submission form online, I decided I didn't trust I would receive, you all would receive the message, and I thought I'd better come straight to the Board personally to advocate for a school named after Ms. Bradley. I thank you for your time and service. I hope you seriously consider naming our future schools after people who've lived their lives completely, people like Lucille Bradley, who on her 100th birthday said, "I'm 100, and all of the young people are my children, and I just love you all."
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carrie Madsen-Daly.
My name is Carrie Madsen-Daly. I'm a parent of a preschooler and a 6-year-old 1st grader at Galatas, one of the top-ranked public elementary schools in the area. However, school rankings mean... However, school rankings mean nothing if children don't have adequate unstructured playtime. Our first graders have been allotted 15 minutes of recess in their seven-hour day. Some of this time is consumed by lining up to go outside and then lining up again on the hardtop before being released onto the playground. In the end, it sometimes amounts to 10 minutes of unstructured play for these young minds who are learning their way in the world. My daughter said she barely has time to get to the play equipment to find someone to play with, and by the time they start playing together, they're called back inside. These young kids are quickly back on task in the classroom, filling out worksheet after worksheet. They are asked to stay quiet as they work, no socializing, no play. Why is this important, and why are we talking to you here now? This is changing my child, who has always had a love of learning and of school before this. At age two, she wanted to learn to read. She also wanted to learn about where she was born. Soon enough, she could identify Singapore and neighboring countries on a globe. At age three, before she started preschool, she was reading books. Preschool brought new opportunities for socialization and learning new things that she hadn't expressed interest in learning before. She loved school. She looked forward to school and to kindergarten and first grade. She currently excels academically, but she is not herself. This young girl, who used to sit for hours at a time finishing a chapter book, paces in circles as she talks to me when she gets home at the end of her day. She is often fidgety and moody. She's stressed and unhappy. She's not herself. As research has shown, unstructured playtime is essential for children to develop social skills, problem-solving skills, and exercise their creative minds. The American Association of Pediatrics recommends significant unstructured recess at schools in order for healthy development of the whole child. Test-driven teaching requirements have squeezed socialization and free play out of our kids' school day. At least some schools are doing the right thing and adding more recess to their schedule. Austin and Houston ISDs have recently mandated 30 minutes of recess to protect the health and well-being of our children, who have the right to take adequate breaks, just as adults do in the workplace. Some of the top elementary schools in our nation have been giving their children at least 30 minutes of recess for a while now, while showing high test scores and academic achievements. Here are some examples. Spirit Ridge Elementary School in Bellevue, Washington, they're ranked 19th in the country by Best Schools and they're recipients of the Washington State Achievement Award. The report card shows that children score in the 93rd to 98th percentile across all subjects. They have 40 minutes of recess, 20 minutes in the morning, and 20 in the afternoon. They also have a short day midweek with early release on Wednesdays. The International School at Dundee in Greenwich, Connecticut, they rank 12th in the nation by Best Schools. Their report card shows, school performance falls in the top 10 percent of schools in Connecticut, and they're ranked, I think, top five in Connecticut for their school. They have 30 minutes of recess, and they often take classes outdoors for a variety of learning experiences. Nice Smith School for the Gifted in Herndon, Virginia, that was recognized as a top 10 school in the world by Johns Hopkins University's Center for Talented Youth. They have a 25-minute recess for all grades with an additional 15-minute morning recess for the kindergartners. If we're preparing children to succeed in college and the professional world, we need to provide them with the skills to attain success: teamwork, negotiation, cooperation, empathy, sharing, perseverance, and self-control. All of these things are tested and learned during unstructured play at recess. It's a fundamental right for all children to be treated humanely and equally. We need the school district to mandate at least 30 minutes of unstructured recess for every child in the district to make things equitable and foster a healthier environment to nurture the whole child. This needs to be implemented quickly for the sake of our kids' well-being. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here on behalf of my very, very good friend Barbara Cargill. I've known her for over 20 years, and I have watched her raise three incredible boys into young men. She's been a mentor to me and a very, very best friend. I remember her calling me over 20 years ago and saying, "Hey, what do you think about this?" And talking about the science camp. And I said, "Man, that sounds like a great idea." Before I could blink my eyes, she was already going to the Church Board and had everything rolling, and I was just amazed. I remember her also calling me that same, you know, several years later about the school, about the State School Board. And I said, "That sounds like a great idea." And then she became a part of the State School Board and even became the chairman. I am proud to call her my friend. She is passionate about children and education, and she has vision. She has devoted her, most of her life, to the education of children, and I can't think of a better person to name an elementary school after than my friend Barbara Cargill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item three is the consent agenda. I've had a request, so, Mr. Sanders, to pull item number, item I, excuse me, and, of which we will vote separately for that, and he will abstain. But, so for the balance of the consent agenda, accepting, I?
Motion to approve with the exception of item number I.
I second the motion.
Item letter I.
Number I.
Number I.
I have a motion in a second, I think. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Thank you very much.
By the way, that is a Roman number.
Maybe it's one. Okay, item three, Roman number one. I consider resolution approving the investment program and list of qualified investment brokers. Mr. Sanders, would you like to make a statement?
I just wish to abstain on this because of the fact that my employer is listed as one of the investment advisors.
Very good. Let the record show, and could I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved.
Second.
In a second. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Any questions? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. And any abstentions? You? Item four A, recommendation to dismiss the turnaround plan for Austin Elementary.
All right, at this time, I'll invite Shelley Winkler up to the podium to introduce this item.
Good evening, President-Husbands, members of the board, and Dr. Stockton. As you recall, the board has approved two plans for Austin Elementary. In October of 2015, the board approved the Targeted Improvement Plan, which detailed the specific instructional goals for the campus. And last May, the Austin Elementary Turnaround Plan was presented for your approval. The campus was required to develop this plan due to an improvement required rating in 2014 and 2015. At that time, we outlined the process of instructional rounds, similar to the rounds used in the medical field as a way to use the campus's collective strengths to build on instructional practices and to promote climate, culture, and collaboration. During that same presentation, we also noted that campuses receiving a met standard for the 2016 school year would have the option for the Board of Trustees to implement, modify, or dismiss the turnaround plan. At that time, we were optimistic we would be returning to you with that decision, and we're here this evening not only to make a recommendation to dismiss this plan, but to celebrate the accomplishments of the staff and students of Austin Elementary. Joining us this evening, we have Dr. Serena Pearson, Principal of Austin Elementary. I can't see her. We have Assistant Principals Katie Mo and Michelle Allen with us, and we also have representatives from Austin Elementary, the teaching and staff. If you could please stand and be recognized at this time. So we'd like to take just a few minutes to review the 2016 Accountability Summary for Austin Elementary. As you can see, the campus improved in all indices. If you look at the screen, the green line indicates the state standard for meeting each goal in each indices. Index one looks at the overall student achievement for each of the tests that are given on the campus, and that area improves 11 points. If you look at index two, it measures the growth of students, students that have met their growth or exceeded their growth, and that improved by 10 points. Index three looks at closing the achievement gap. That looks at our economically disadvantaged students, as well as the lowest two student groups from the previous year, which for Austin Elementary is Hispanic and white students. And index four, it looks at post-secondary readiness, which is how many students have met the final phase-in standard for two or more tests, and that improved by four points. If you dig a little bit deeper and you want to look at the gains that the students made, you won't see math on here, because in 2015, math was not a part of the accountability system. But reading has increased overall by 5 percent for all tests. Writing has increased by 19 percent, and the Hispanic group has increased by 20, the white student group by 17, and economically disadvantaged by 13. Austin Elementary will still be required to develop a targeted improvement plan this upcoming year, but it's important to look at the additional requirements that the campus still must meet under the Texas Accountability and Intervention System. TEA is still, again, requiring them to develop a targeted improvement plan even though they have met standard. This is the same plan that has previously been presented to the board for approval with specific targeted instructional goals. Implementing both the turnaround plan and the targeted improvement plan would require the campus to maintain two plans, as well as any required documentation for each individual plan. The documentation requirements for the turnaround plan have not been released by the Texas Education Agency, and guidance on this documentation may not be released until October. There is a possibility that the documentation requirement for both plans could add an unnecessary burden to the campus. Finally, if implemented, the turnaround plan cannot be modified for two years. We believe in the strategies developed during the turnaround plan process. However, we would like to have the flexibility to modify the plan if necessary. We intend to embed the strategies identified in the original turnaround plan into the required targeted improvement plan for Austin Elementary, which will be presented to you in October. Consolidating these two plans into one cohesive plan will not only allow for modifications and adjustments to be made to meet the best, to best meet the needs of the campus, but it will also reduce the paperwork burden of maintaining two separate plans. We are extremely proud of the work of the Austin Elementary staff and community. We look forward to another successful year of academic achievement and growth. At this time, we ask that you approve the recommendation to dismiss the Austin Turnaround Plan.
I have a motion.
So move?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion or questions?
Just have a comment. When I first read this, I was kind of like, mm, but as I kept reading and as you presented here tonight, the Targeted Improvement Plan implementation and combing into that, the turnaround plan, I think, is the right choice. I think it will help, as you said, provide that flexibility. I was also extremely pleased and thank you to all the staff at Austin for your hard work and your dedication. It showed, and we thank you. Absolutely. Second.
Mr. Sanders? Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Congratulations.
Great job, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item four B, Read for a Better Life Resolution, Dr. Stockton.
Okay, at this time, I'll invite Dr. Nell to the podium to read the resolution.
Good evening, President-Husbands, members of the board, and Dr. Stockton. As we've already kicked off tonight, this is an exciting time for our school district every year as we kick off our Read for a Better Life initiative, and I know that all of us as staff members look forward to all the opportunities that we get to be on campus and be with children and read. And tomorrow is that day that we block out, and we do that all day, and that's exciting for us. But in addition to the staff, I also want to commend our campuses that do a great job of having students read to other students. Tomorrow, if you get out on campuses, you will see fourth graders go into kindergarten classrooms. You will see high school students traveling all through their feeder zone, reading to students at elementaries, and it's special. And Ms. Blakelock usually does a great job of highlighting that on the website, so I look forward to those pictures every year, and I'm sure we'll see those tomorrow. So at this time, we're here to kind of come and ask you to formally support the Read for a Better Life initiative with the adoption of a resolution, and I will read that to you at this time. Whereas, the Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees recognizes that being read to aloud is the single most important activity for children to build the knowledge required for their eventual success in reading. And whereas, the Board of Trustees recognizes that success in reading is the gateway to success in other academic areas. And whereas, the Board of Trustees recognizes that an individual's ability to read affects all aspects of their lives, from the development of critical thinking and problem-solving skills to gaining knowledge about the world in which we live, thus making them a valued and contributing member of society. It is therefore resolved that the Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees proclaims that the staff of CISD will support Read for a Better Life and authorizes the district to enlist the support of parents and community of CISD to read aloud to every student 30 minutes every day. At this time, I would ask for your consideration and approval of the resolution.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the resolution as read. Second.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion, questions, comments? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. And thank you, staff and community, for all your work and all your willingness to read to the children.
Outstanding. Thank you.
And Dr. Stockton, you did quite a good fine job.
Exceptional reading.
Exceptional.
I practiced.
Item five A, Discuss Possible Names for Flex School 17. This is a discussion item only, so at this point, at this time, I will open the floor up for a discussion of possible names for Flex School 17 amongst board members. And anybody welcome to start?
This is the elementary grant.
Yes.
This is the Flex School.
Yes.
I actually... Do you mind if I say something first?
No, go ahead.
I don't like to get in front of you ever.
Just tell them to shut up.
I ain't gonna say that.
Oh, it's gonna be interesting.
I would like, I would like to say, speak on behalf of myself, and hopefully the board can, can help. This is obviously, there's several of us on here, this is our first time to go through this, and this is, it's enjoyable, and we appreciate all of the input that the community gave us. We asked for that, and we got plenty of it. And there are so many suggestions and names, but yet we only have just a few schools, and so this process, although it's new to several of us, it's not easy. It's certainly going to be difficult to narrow it down, and there may be some people who are in support of a couple of names that may not make it to the shortlist, and we wish we had more schools to name every, get everybody's name on here, but I just wanted to say that out loud, that we would love to have more schools and everybody's name on here, but unfortunately, that's not going to be the case. And just because a name is not picked, doesn't mean that we don't think it's worthy of a name of a school, so just want to throw that out there.
Very well put. And would you happen to have a recommendation? Would you ask that to somebody else?
Well, I'm more than happy, but I didn't want to steal any more.
No. I appreciate you, you know, leading off with that. That was outstanding.
Mr. Wick?
I really was admire the speech the young lady gave. I think she's left all ready. So my nomination would be Ms. Lucille Bradley.
Thank you.
I like that one, too.
Can we skip back down to, would you have a recommendation?
Sure, I would, I'd like to throw a name out there as well for the elementary school. I'd like to throw Ms. Nell de Blair's name in the, to be considered as well.
Okay.
Doctor, I mean, Mrs. Powell.
Mrs. Powell, do you have a recommendation? I'm sorry?
No, go ahead.
In, or a discussion item?
Well, I really appreciate, just like Deitch was referencing, the young lady who spoke before about honoring those who aren't with us any longer versus honoring folks who are still in our community among us. I also like the idea, as political as I am, staying away from political figures, especially if they're still active in our political fabric. And so I really, I wish, I want to, I would like to know why this person's name wasn't included on the list. I mean, what were the, I guess, was it not enough people, you know, added the name?
I couldn't tell unless it was a cutoff date.
It just didn't get submitted. She called, I talked to her on the phone. It came, it just didn't come through our system, for whatever reason. So I talked to her the day after. I gave her the, you know, told her really the options were to come and speak, also provided her where all your email addresses were, so that she could directly send those to you, because it was after the fact. So for whatever reason, it just wasn't, we went back and looked, and it didn't come through the day that she said.
Very good.
Fair enough. We got it, Dan.
Thank you.
She got it, Dan.
Skip down here.
[inaudible].
Um, keep going in line.
I think we're to you.
Okay. I, I, being new to this process, I have to echo some of what Skeeter said, and that this was a very interesting process and a whole lot of names to come through. I looked at it and really got in deep in asking several people that were even nominated on here if they really were interested in having a school named after them. Those that are living usually are extremely involved in the campuses, and not everybody wants to continue to commit that level of time, and so that was a very interesting process for me. But one of the individuals that really stuck out to me, and I didn't know this person very well, but Kathy Clark was a name that stuck out, and I wanted to throw out there for us to discuss.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Sanders?
Mr. Sanders? Sure.
Echo your thoughts or?
Absolutely. I recently spoke with a former board member, because I said, this is hard. And he said, it's probably one of the hardest jobs you have to do as a school board member, because as Mr. Hubert said, there are so many great people, and to be able to have such an honor would be awesome. It is hard, and every name that was submitted, I actually feel very close to for a lot of different reasons. I agree with a couple of the names that were submitted tonight. Ms. Lucille Bradley came to mind, Barbara Cargill came to mind, and Kathy Clark came to mind. So those were my three thoughts.
Well, I will, I will say that after carefully considering the list and, and even in consideration of Mrs. Bradley, who I knew and had a lot of respect for, I had settled and, and settled in at the comfort level with Kathy Clark myself, knowing her widespread service to the district from an administrative and a principal, assistant principal level, and the number of years served, like I said, there's, there are many deserving people, and I've heard the discussion before about people that are deceased versus living, and there's just mixed, a mixed blessing there. Certainly, you know, I do agree with not certain, not naming our schools after active politicians or politically active people, but on the other hand, you know, not necessarily do I agree that they must be deceased. So it is with that that I also champion the name Catherine Clark tonight, and with that, I will give everybody one more chance to either discuss, I mean, you brought forth the name, but if you have anything to add, certainly don't want to choke off either debate or praise, and so I will start again with, in the same order, if you have an additional comment or, or question or anything.
I guess the question I have is, we're on five A, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So discussion, possible names, so we're not voting at this point.
We're not voting, and this is strictly for the Flex School discussions.
Strictly for the Flex School discussion. Okay. I guess the only other thing I'd like to add is, when I did hear Lucille Bradley, and then I had an opportunity to look up her obituary and a little bit more about her, I was kind of taken back as well of the accomplishments that she had and the contribution she made, the way she lived her life, and also the kindness in that time period that she, that she lived, and that was, that was a tough time period, so I, although I did, I threw the, the name Nell de Blair out there, who, by the way, is a, she's a Conroe graduate, she was actually the Conroe High School mascot years ago, before it was a full-body mascot, it was just the, the ears and the paws, but...
[laughing]
And she's also a part of the, started the, the Conroe ISD Education Foundation, which so many, so many of our students and also teachers have, have been a part of. But I, I just liked the Lucille Bradley, I like her, I like her name, I like the message, and I, I think that would be very admirable to, to recognize some, someone of her caliber and accomplishment to, to name a school after. I think that'd be very, very fitting.
I agree. I echo exactly what Mr. Hubert said. My only concern, I guess, with Ms. Clark and I have, I mean, utmost respect for Ms. Clark and admiration for all that she's done with the district, my only concern is that she's still an employee of the district, and, yeah, I mean, the years of service is, and I was asking Dr. Sharples, I hate to put you on the spot, how many years of service she, she's had in the district, and she threw out a number that was, she surpassed my age of, of living, so...
Are we talking about Ms. Sharples?
Yes.
Is Dr. Sharples, or are we talking about?
I'm Dr. Sharples. I was just talking about the years of service in the district, and, and so, anyway, getting back to my point, I think Ms. Bradley is, is most deserving of this, the years that she's served during the times in which she served, you just can't say enough to that, you can't speak enough praises to someone who served that many years, lived that many years, and during the time in which she served, I'm pretty sure if you had every student that she's taught, it's been grandchild and, and child that she's taught in this, in this room, it would, it would more than exceed the capacity of this room and then some. So for her to be a Conroe native and to live in the community for that amount of years and serve in the time in which she, she served, I just, it's a clear, clear, clear cut choice for me.
I have, I have to ask a question, because you said Kathy Clark is a current employee, and we, you know, I, I understand she's retired from full-time employment, am I correct? She's basically serving in the same capacity as Jean Stewart and several others that we actually have schools named after. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm just, I'm like, I'm sitting into this trying to...
That's correct.
Okay. Mrs. Powell?
Well, I would just like to say, you know, we, tonight, we've already honored a teacher for the extra sacrifices that they make for their students daily, and there's no higher honor I can imagine for an educator than to have an educational facility named after them, and it doesn't happen very often, doesn't have the opportunity to happen very often, and I think it would be more than fitting, and I can only speak from my own personal opinions and experiences, but it would be the highest honor for myself if some such thing was to ever happen to me, so I would love to be a part of bestowing that honor to our memory and our legacy in this community.
I ask my question. Ray?
Mr. Sanders?
Mr. Sanders?
I, I, I've got Lucille Bradley number one and Kathy Clark right there, number one, too.
One A, one B?
Told you this is hard.
Yeah.
Let me, anybody else have anything else?
Yeah.
I didn't mean to choke off the conversation. Is that all you have?
That's it.
Okay. We're talking about, you know, once again, it's, it's been said many times tonight, we're talking about two fine educators.
Absolutely.
And either one is deserving, as is my favorite teacher ever, and your favorite teacher ever, you know, everybody has a favorite teacher, okay? But I will say this, I believe her service, for what it's worth, at the administrative level, broadened her, her knowledge of her throughout the district, and I believe that that carries the day for me on the, on the belief that Kathy Clark should be the name brought forward. I mean, that's my opinion, just because of her broader knowledge through the, through the, through the district and not just the one feeder zone. So with that said, both deserving, I appreciate each and every one of you's recommendation, and we will proceed on to item...
Mr. President?
Excuse me?
Thank you for the opportunity. My understanding...
I agree with you.
I think you should thank Ms. Gladys, because I was sure exactly how to bring an item without a motion, so... Mrs. Rules of Order, thank you very much, and we appreciate that help.
Very much so.
Appreciate that.
Okay. Item three, five D, Name Flex School Seventeen. Any other motion?
A motion that we named, go ahead.
No, you started. Go for it.
Flex School Seventeen, Ms. Lucille Bradley.
Second. All right.
Motion in the second.
Discussion.
Discussion.
I'm still in Kathy Clark's corner, and... I'll support what the majority want.
You? Any else need discussion?
I've, I've spoken what I, what I feel, I mean, I, great people, it's, it's like...
Tough decision either way.
Mr. Sanders said this is extremely difficult. It's tough.
So win-win.
But I don't think there's a wrong decision, really.
Absolutely.
I do like being able to have Mr. Kaufman show up at things on campus. I gotta say, it's nice when I've gone to things on campus and the person the school's named after has a connection with those kids. That's my only hesitation, and I understand the argument against having someone still living, their legacy is not done. I've made that argument multiple times myself, but I struggle because I do like that connection. Mr. Patterson, Ms. Stewart, I mean, Dr. Stewart.
Motion in the second, discussion?
Any more?
Ray?
Any other discussion? Okay, before we will vote, all those in favor of Lucille Bradley, the Flex Seventeen being named after Lucille Bradley, please raise your right hand. Three, four. All those opposed? Okay, that, that, congratulations to the family, I should say, I guess, of Lucille Bradley on the Flex School number seventeen being named after. I will have to solicit some help in reaching out to potential family members and, you know, for, and I think that is going to be a blessing to her family and to this community, and I think, like you said, there is no way we could win or lose with that.
May I, I don't have a vote in this. Can I, can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
No, I don't have a vote. It's yard voted. I just want to, I guess this is a sign of age that I know most of the people on the list, and want to thank the community for the input, and Skeeter, I thought you said it really well, there's just, there's just some tremendously deserving people on this list. Had the opportunity to, to get to know Ms. Bradley for several years. She used to come to the retired teachers meeting that we have in here once a month, and just a delightful, a delightful lady who had a long impact in her schools and her community. She, I was always amazed how she could move in high heels at the age of ninety-eight or ninety-nine, she could still do that, and...
I'm getting inspired to that.
Yeah, just, just a delightful person and certainly has a strong legacy, so thank you very much for your consideration for all the names.
Very good. Okay, item number five D, and this will be, I'm sorry, five C, is Discuss Possible Names for the New High School in the Oak Ridge Feeder Zone, which will become another feeder zone, whatever, suffice it to say, but if, if I could, just to ask you all to go in the same order, just because it's as good an order as any.
We were really out of order.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
You didn't stop on mine, they're fine.
Okay, I'll go first again, that's fine. So I would, I would like for, to kick out the, the name Grand Oaks High School. It was suggested several times through the, through the website, and it kind of follows theme with our other high schools, we don't have it named after an individual, and I'm, I'm really fine with either, once again, any of these names, but I will throw out there Grand Oaks High School.
You want to retract that, you said any of these names.
Yeah.
Not any of them, the, the more deserving.
I got it. I, I concur, I think Grand Oaks is great. My first choice actually was Woodson High School, I think there's a gully that runs back there, I don't want the gully included, I just like the Woodson High. Woodson High or Grand Oaks High, I'm indifferent either, or Woodson High or Grand Oaks High, that's my, those are my choices.
You know, I, I don't have a number one preference, I don't have a list, but I do have, you know, having worked in other school districts and hearing a bunch of different names, I see some of these names, and I think, man, that sounds just like the one in such-and-such district, or maybe the one that I was in this morning in Cy Fair, so I actually really appreciate the Grand Oaks suggestion and the Woodson's suggestion, because I actually have never heard of a school in the area with that name, so that works for me.
Thank you. Mrs. Bush?
I'm in the Grand Oaks camp. I like it.
Y'all got a camp going on?
[laughing]
That's, that's where I'm, where I'm sitting.
Party of one.
No camps.
Party of one.
Bring up another name.
You know, I think our policy says that we name it after an area, and so, you know, it's, it's, it's kind of interesting, that is a new area, and it's still, I actually tried to go back and I tried to research the last hundred years in Montgomery County and that area, trying to come up with something.
Good luck.
And there were a lot of interesting things I found in reading, I like to read anyway, so Read for Better Life works for me. Always learn something new, but I also thought about how we try and not only name it after the area, but we want it to have some significance for that area, and as a part of that, the two names that I had are exactly the two that were presented. I liked Woodson High and I also liked Grand Oaks. What I liked about Woodson is that there is a tie to that gully, I understand, but the Woodson family, I believe, was part of that gully and named it, and I did read something about Montgomery County at that area. The other part, though, is kind of the newer version, which is you've got the Grand Parkway, and you've got Imperial Oaks that are right there. I think those, from my perspective, Grand Oaks would probably be one, simply because people are going to be familiar with Grand Parkway, and they're going to be very familiar with Oaks, Imperial Oaks. I, I, I think it's nice to have a nice separation, and so those were my two choices, was Grand Oaks and Woodson, and that's kind of my thought process behind it.
My only concern with Woodson is, and I'm just going to throw this out there, is that there is that development now and that people will associate it with the development and not with the gully, and...
Aren't they, aren't they calling that area Woodson?
Woodson Reserve.
Okay.
There's, there's several neighborhoods there, and, but the point well taken, and for that reason, I would tend to agree with the thought, there's many good names there, but Grand Oaks is original, it doesn't preclude or exclude anybody, and so I will stay with that as well. Any other discussion, questions, comments?
Well, Ms. Powell, you sure there's no other schools out there with similar naming?
I mean, you know, there's lots of them on this list that could be switched around and everything, but I, I think Grand Oaks is a great description of the area. If you said Grand Oaks High School, people would automatically know, you know, what those were, where those two words were derived from, I mean, if you're familiar with Conroe ISD at all, so I think it's a great name for that, that school, for sure.
And it is right there on the Grand Parkway, so it'll be seen, it will be a showcase.
Yeah, like I said, Grand Oaks and Woodson, I was indifferent, but sounds like we're leaning more toward Grand Oaks, so I guess that's it for the discussion.
Any other discussion? All right, we'll proceed to item five D, Name New High School in Oak Ridge Feeder Zone. Have a motion.
I move that we name the new high school that is currently in the Oak Ridge feeder zone, Grand Oaks High School.
Second to motion.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion, questions, or comments? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Very good. Stockton?
Thank you for, for the names. We can now refer to those buildings as names, and they're, they're going to take on personalities, so thank you very much.
Well done. I think that's excellent, excellent.
Just a, a comment, high school is a lot easier than elementary due to the geographic limitations, I like that a lot better.
Yes.
Very good. Hey, item five D, Consider Approval of Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment for the Network Operations Center and authorize the superintendent to execute the contract documents. Dr. Stockton?
Okay, Easy Foster, if you'll come and present that item.
President Husbands, members of the Board, Dr. Stockton, it's my pleasure to bring forward for your consideration and approval tonight, the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment for our Network Operations Center and authorize... and authorize our superintendent to execute the contract documents. On August eighteenth of 2015, our Board of Trustees selected Balfour Beatty Construction to be our district's construction manager at risk for this Network Operations Center project. Based on the proposal given to us by Balfour Beatty Construction, the district has negotiated a guaranteed maximum price for the project of $6,657,747. The contract documents are being prepared by outside counsel and to be executed by Dr. Stockton. This project is a technology improvement project that will bolster our infrastructure for our current needs and have some expansion ability for our foreseeable growth into the future. We are also handling a few lifecycle items in this building because the Network Operations Center is in this building. So we're going to replace some carpet and do some other things that are needed since that haven't been done since we moved in early in the early 2000s. At this time, I would request your approval for this guaranteed maximum price.
Have a motion.
A move we approve as presented. A second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor... Excuse me. Did you start to say something?
No.
Okay. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign.
Good news is we don't have to name it.
We can.
Thank you.
Item five F, capital improvements update. Doctor Stockton?
Easy, please.
Picture time.
This time I'd like to bring forward for an update of our capital improvements that are underway within the district. Starting with our newly-named Grand Oaks High School. The project is on schedule. It's scheduled to open for school in August of 2018. As you can see from this picture, the site is starting to really take shape. The building is coming together. The parking lots are coming together. The detention facilities, athletic facilities are starting to be visible. The main work focused on this site right now is in the building construction itself. So you can see we have two separate direction crews, one working on the academic section of the building and the other crew working on the fine arts, commons, and athletics portions of the building. Moving on, to give you an update on our 2016 campus lifecycle project. A lot of this project was wrapped up over the summer. So last month, we reported that Runyon Elementary was ready for the school to begin. Our athletics improvements are also tracks and things of that nature have been done. What we're looking now are the pictures of the nearly-complete Candy Creek Roofing System. That roof project was scheduled to run through October. So that project is on schedule and scheduled to finish just as we planned.
I'm gonna miss the...
Can we back up to that? Two pictures back, please. Thank you. Now, is the tan roof the new roof?
The tan roof is the new roof. So we...
And the red was already had been replaced?
No, sir. The entire, all the metal on that building was that nice faded green color. So when we took on this project, we took the opportunity to make that building more closely resemble the school colors. The green did not have any connection to Candy Creek High School.
Okay.
So all of the metal on this building is replaced, is new.
Fantastic job.
Moving into our safety and security project. This project is one part of a four-phase project that will take most of the bond lifecycle, the course of the bond projects we've got. Phase one, the summer, focused on a group of campuses and a large portion of the summer work was to make the... Enhance our secure vestibules at those campuses. The work that continues on through the end of the year and into January are camera improvements and other access control improvements, other security improvements for those campuses. And we're taking lessons learned from this section of the work, applying it to the next phase. And we're just now beginning design work on the next phase over the next couple of months. Moving into Grange Land Intermediate, where we're adding some classroom space to Grange Land. That project is on schedule. We are anticipating turning over that project for use. We're turning it over to over the Christmas break so that when the students return from Christmas break, they'll be in their new classrooms. As you can see, the work here is in the exterior wall structures. The roofing project... Roofing is almost complete. The exterior walls and the interior walls are going in now. You can see the ductwork and the piping and all the mechanical systems are being installed as well. Moving on to our newly-named Lucille Bradley Elementary. I'm happy to report this project is also on schedule. It is... Will be ready to open for August of 2017. And much like our high school, the building is the focus here. We are erecting the building structures going around. We are also starting the exterior wall construction and the roofing construction, things of that nature, as you see the workers on that building now. Moving on to the Woodlands, where we're making a robotics addition, the Woodless College Park Robotics Edition. Demolition is underway and the foundation work is underway for that building. That project is also on schedule and we're scheduled to turn that over for student use in the spring of 2017.
It's College Park, isn't it?
That is College Park, yes.
2017?
Yeah, right around the corner.
Wow.
That is our update.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Foster? Item six A, consider adopt order authorizing issuance of CISD unlimited tax school building refunding bonds. Doctor Stockton? Stop there.
Hello, Mr. Rice. Finish that and when he comes up, Aaron Rice, our CFO, will present that item.
Good evening, President Husbands, members of the board, and Dr. Stockton. It is my pleasure to recommend that the Board of Trustees approve the order authorizing the issuance of Conroe Independent School District unlimited tax school building and/or refunding bonds, setting certain parameters for the bonds, authorizing the superintendent and chief financial officer to approve the amount, the interest rate, price, including the terms thereof, and certain other procedures and provisions related thereto. The parameter order is for the sale of Conroe Independent School District Bond Series 2016A. The approximate new issue amount is $150 million from the 2015 bond referendum. The bond sale will provide funds for the completion of the new high school and building a new intermediate in the Oak Ridge feeder zone, the build-out of Jean Stewart Elementary, renovations and additions to Conroe High School, Knox Junior High renovations, safety and security projects, lifecycle replacement projects, and technology. In addition, the district expects to issue approximately $73 million in refunding bonds. The current estimated savings in debt service is approximately $8.4 million. This represents a savings of 10.2% on the projected debt service for the refunded bonds. In addition to BOK, as the district's financial advisor, Mr. John Robuck is here. And then also, we have Andrew Skirth, who is our bond counsel, and Mr. Ben Morris is here, just in case y'all have any questions. The district's recommended financial team, our underwriters, are also listed on here for your review. At this time, I would like to have Mr. Robuck come up and present the schedule of events.
Thank you, Darren. President Husbands, member of the board, Dr. Stockton. I'm not sure if there's much more to say. I do have a presentation that's on the board. If you'll humor me, I'd like to go through it briefly. As you know, I always like to start off with the current bond environment. This is the bond buyer index of 20 municipal bonds. This is the general obligation index that tracks general obligation bonds across the country. What we are proposing to issue is general obligation bonds for the district. This would be the second sale of the authorization of 2015. In addition, as Mr. Rice said, a refunding to save the district some money. If you'll notice on this chart, the last sixteen years, in the middle there, the average rate is about a 4.48%. Look to the far right, we're currently at a 2.96%. We did hit an all-time low about a month ago, month and a half ago, of 2.8%. So we bounced off that a little bit. We're still within 16 basis points, or 0.16% off all-time lows and well below the historical average. So it's a great time to sell bonds, lock in some bonds at low interest rates, and take advantage of those rates. As Mr. Rice mentioned, we are showing you a refunding for savings. This is not a restructuring. The refunding would match the existing debt linked. It would not extend that linked. It's purely for interest cost purposes. We're taking bonds that have higher interest rate and refunding them at lower interest rate and realizing the interest cost savings between those two. The refunding would include portions of the series 2010 bond issue and then portions of 2011 school building and portion of the 2011 refunding bonds for about $73 million. This number... Darren and I have been talking about this for about probably three or four months now. And this number changes based on the rates. We've seen numbers where we've refunded up close to $100 million and then all the way down to about $50 million. What we're gonna ask y'all tonight is to approve a parameter order that gives us the ability to issue up to $100 million in refunding bonds, to kind of time the market and find the bonds that make the most sense, generate the most savings for the district. In addition, we'll be asking you to approve about $200 million in new money bonds. We're looking at 150 right now, but potentially up to 200, depending on what the needs are between now and the time we sell the bonds. This is the estimated debt service requirements for the two bond issues. We split them out. It is considered one bond issue, but we split them out into two different series, showing the refunding portion there in the middle. And actually, let me back up. If you look at this chart here or the graph here or chart here, excuse me, the current debt service requirements of the district is there on the far left. Then we have the bonds we're looking to refund, the debt service and the bonds we're looking to refund, plus the principal and interest on the proposed refunding. You'll notice there, the bonds are refunding, the debt ends in 2033, and we are not extending the debt past 2033. And then there in yellow is the estimated savings based on the refunding bond issue. So we're looking at about almost $8.4 million savings. And then the next two columns, the principal interest and proposed new money portion of $150 million. Again, that will generate proceeds of $150 million. And then the total debt service requirements in the far right there, that the result of that sale. And then tentative scheduled events. We have gone ahead and applied for the permit school fund guarantee. We should find out actually on Thursday when we get that, which we will, which will allow us to sell the bonds with a AAA rating, which is the highest rating possibly to sell bonds. We've done a first draft offering document, hoping that you would approve this parameter order tonight. And then obviously, the next date there is tonight. We're asking you to approve that parameter. And then the next big date is the bond pricing. Tentatively, we're scheduled to sell the week of October 31st. We've got penciled in Tuesday, November 1. But again, with the parameter order that we're asking you to approve tonight allows us to move a little faster where we want to. And if the market's hot, we can go a little faster. If it's cold, we can wait a little longer. So it gives us the flexibility to maximize the savings and keep interest rates as low as possible. And then again, according to the schedule, we'd close the week of December 5th, probably December 8th, that Thursday. And at that point, you'd receive your $150 million in proceeds. And we lock in those savings and those will be realized. And hopefully, everybody will be happy. With that, I'd be happy to answer your questions with the financing. Again, Mr. Morris from Andrew Skirth is here. He's the one who drafted the parameter order we're asking you to approve. I'm sure you'd be happy to answer any questions you have on the legal documents.
Do I have a motion?
A move we approve as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion, questions?
I have a question of Mr. Rice. I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm gonna kind of look this. Sorry. I know that we have done a bunch of refunding bonds, which I'm so proud of, that we've saved the district a lot of money. The question is, do you have an idea about what our average rate is over our entire issuances of bonds right now?
Average interest rate, all the outstanding bonds you have right now?
Yes.
Gosh, I'd have to go back and look.
Average. What I was thinking about is maybe for our workshop, if possible, just a one-pager presentation. I know that we have done some refundings, but just to make sure that our entire board is well aware, as well as the community, is the dollars that we've saved as a board saved our district over, just since I've been on the board since 2010. I know we've done at least three or four refundings. I know we've also done some new issuances. I know that rates have come down. It looked like rates were down again today a little bit. We don't know what the Fed's gonna do tomorrow. It's a bet.
It is.
I'm not betting.
Ray, I think we've done three refundings since I've been on the board.
Yeah, so I'd just like to see, even if we could show kind of what our portfolio of issuances was, even... Just to give an idea, I know we've created some significant savings in future debt expense that we've got to pay out. We don't have to pay it now. So I think this is great. I'm very well-versed, I think, in it. I think you've done a great job of making sure that you're always trying to keep us at the forefront of that. I'm not sure that all districts are doing that. I think they're missing some opportunities. But I think it's great because the other part I like is that we're not extending out any maturities. That, to me, is always the big thing. If I go refinance my house and do another 30 years, that's not helping. I'm paying interest on money I shouldn't be paying interest on. We're not doing that. We're not extending those maturities. We're shortening the rates without shortening or without extending those maturities. And I think that's excellent.
Well, definitely prepares. That's something we can easily do. I've gotta believe it's a very, it's getting lower every year.
That's what I expected, to see a significant decline. I was just thinking it would be a good part of the extra if we could add that.
Absolutely.
Definitely put that in.
And we might add, as far as Mr. Rice, if I could, ask you to add to the one-pager. Okay? In 1980, we had a higher debt ratio than we do today.
Yeah. I'll give you all the history of that.
The number is higher. The ratio is lower.
Yes, I can get you a chart on that.
For a district our size with our growth rates. I commend you both are all, I should say, Dr. Stockton, you and your team, for your excellent work as well. Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Any other discussion, questions? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign.
Yeah. Ray motion, I second.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item six D, financial reports. Rice for Dr. Stockton.
Mr. Rice, please.
All right, I'm here this evening to present the financial statements for the district for the month of August. I would like to preface this with, we're currently under audit since this is year-end. So these numbers don't have all the accruals in there that we're required to do. So these numbers will change, but on our projections, we tried to work those in there for you. Okay, these statements will include our general fund, our debt service, child nutrition, and self-funded insurance. The first statement we'll start with this evening is our balance sheet. The balance sheet includes our assets, our liabilities, and our fund balances for the district. And each month, we always like to look at our cash and investments. And as we look at those, we'll concentrate here on the general fund. We currently have cash on hand of $13,300. You will see that's increased, but that is to cover the gates at football games. We have change available to purchase tickets. Bank deposits, $5.4 million. We have invested in our state pools, $90.4 million. We have other investments, other short-term investments of $15.4 million. And investments with TCG Investment Advisors, they handle our longer-term investments of $50,803,000, for total cash investments of $162 million. Property taxes, we always like to look, how did we end the year? Once again, we exceeded 100%, but this is current and delinquent. So those two together got us over 100%. And we do that each year. And I would like to point out, if you look at the property tax column, you see that $10 million figure, that's the amount of taxes that will become delinquent that we're still owed from previous years. The next statement we'll look at is our income statement for the month. That includes our revenues and expenditures. Our revenues is broken down into three categories, our local and intermediate sources, our state program revenues and federal program revenues. If we look at the detail of our local and intermediate sources, we can see in the general fund and debt service that property taxes makes up the largest revenue for those two funds. In food service, it's from food sales. In self-funded insurance, it comes from premium contributions. We can also look at our expenditures by major object for each one of the funds. Now, our projected unassigned fund balance, as of 8/31 for our general fund, this is the best projection we have at this time. We're looking at an increase of about $5.2 million, giving us a fund balance of $120 million. Debt service fund, we're looking at just a slight decrease in the debt service fund. That'll give us $32.9 million roughly in fund balance in that fund. Child nutrition, just a slight decrease, $251,000. We're managing that fund to stay within that three-month window. So we feel very comfortable with that projection. with that projection. Now, our 2015 bond referendum status, um, we've currently expended and encumbered $204.5 million. We have a estimated to complete of our projects, $311.4 million, leaving us, uh, with a total project forecast of $515.9 million. That provides us with a contingency currently of $4.3 million on the project. Self-funded insurance, we got our August claims in, uh, for the year. We had total revenues of $40.5 million. We had total expenses of $42.5 million, leaving us with revenues under expenses of roughly $2 million. Participation at the wellness centers, um, for the month of August, we had 360, uh, visitors or patients visit the Conroe Clinic, I mean, the Oak Ridge Clinic. We are working with Memorial Hermann currently to open a site in North County, so we hope to have something, uh, progress further up, up, up north. So we had 6,600 patients at our clinics for the year. Investments, uh, as of the end of August, par value was $294 million. The wham of our pools, once again, is one, one day, we yield 62 basis points. The wham of our other short-term investments was 49 days, yielding 82 basis points. The wham of our longer-term investments with TCG Investment Advisors is 612 days. They're yielding over, little over 1%. So the wham of our combined portfolio was 102 days and we're yielding just about 70 basis points. And our benchmark, which is the 90-day T-bill, is at 30 basis points. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? Rice? Thank you, Mr. Rice. Item 7A, Consider Local Policy Management. Dates 105 and 106. Dr. Stockton?
Mrs. Gladys, please.
Thank you. Dr. Stockton, Mr. Husbands, rarely do you see two fabulous updates together in one item. Tonight, 105 and 106 are presented together. Um, they're not very racy, but 105 is simply, the vast majority of the policy changes you see are changing terminology from "no child left behind" language to "every student succeed" back language, and so that's the majority changes. 106 is the new policy related to cameras and special education classrooms, and it came late. They wanted it to include in the 105, but they were waiting for regulations from the commissioner, and so both of those are being presented to you tonight, and we'll ask for their approval in October. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Gladys. Item 7B, Level 3 Complaint, Appeal Hearing for Employee Chris Lewis. Dr. Stockton?
Uh, this meeting of the Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees is convened on September 20th, 2016. A quorum of the board is present, including the following members: Mrs. Bush, Mr. Sanders, Mr. Husbands, Mr. Williams, Mr. Hubert and Ms. Powell. The purpose of the id, this item on the board's agenda is to hear the complaint and appeal of Maintenance Department Supervisor, Mr. Chris Lewis, in accordance with local board policy DGBA. This hearing is being recorded. Mr. Lewis filed a complaint against Coordinator of Maintenance, Mr. Mark Freeze. Because this complaint is against another district employee, under Texas Government Code Section 551.074, this meeting will be held in closed session. At this time, the meeting of the Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees is adjourned into executive session under Texas Government Code, uh, Section 551.074, the Texas Open Meetings Act. Everyone not associated with this hearing should leave the room. Uh, the board will take no action while in executive session. The time is now 7:32.
Dr. Stockton, if it's not inappropriate, could we take a two-minute break?
Sure.
Board, please.
Please.
Sure.
We'll be right back.
All right, the board, the board has reconvened in open session. The time is now 8:09 PM.
Do I have a motion?
Yes. I'd like to move that this board, uh, uphold the level one and two grievance findings and to affirm that the event will not occur again.
I have a second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion, questions, comments? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Very much.
Motion passes. Uh, Mr. Lewis, the district will send you a written notice, uh, confirming the action taken by the board. Uh, the hearing is now concluded. It's 10 after 8.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
I can make a move.
Um, Dr. Stockton, we told you to adjourn. We needed to clarify something.
I think we clarified it already?
No, yes.
It's clarified.
Okay.
I had already told her, but if we needed to make it a part of the record, so it'd be...
She couldn't see his hand raised.
Oh, I see. I, I had it over here, you know, whatever. I was, I was watching other people and my, my apologies for that.